To order, please. We have with us tonight Pastor Mark Carey from Fellowship Bible Church who will deliver the invocation.
Heavenly Father, from Psalm 33, you tell us to wait and hope for you. That you are help, you are our shield, and you we rejoice and we trust you. It says, "May your unfailing love rest upon us, oh Lord, even as we put our hope in you." So tonight, Father, again, I pray for these good servants. Give them clarity and discussion, wisdom in their decisions, and strength in their duties for your honor and glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Chairman DeHaven, would you leave us the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand in face of the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one addition, which is to add a resolution honoring the Shorando High School baseball team.
They'd be under county officials?
Yes, sir. On their consent agenda, I will add it as item number 10 under county officials.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Supervisor Collins. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Mr. Riley, consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs with the board's consideration. Tab J, Parks and Recreation Commission Report. Tab K, Human Resources Committee Report. Tab L, Public Safety Committee Report. And item number 10 under county officials, resolution honoring the Shorando High School baseball team.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, J, K, L, and the number 10 resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jay Martz.
Would you come forward, please? Give your name, magistrate district, and let me hear your comments. Three minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. Chairman Scheckel, members of the board, Administrator Riley, I'm Jay Martz from the Gainesboro District. We have a very busy agenda this evening, many important actions, and I much, I very much appreciate the Business Climate Assessment Committee report tonight. I did want to highlight a few items out of this that I believe align with the principles of limited government and lower taxes. Just looking at this report, under the Business Attraction and Retention Subcommittee Report, there was a recommendation to assemble several people, both from the county government and the business sector, to look into cutting government costs to the taxpayer. This would show that Frederick County understands business, and their only solution is not to raise taxes, but they can cut expenses like any business is required to do. Under the Land Use and Development Subcommittee, I saw some recommendations concerning the landscape ordinance. It said Frederick County is still by land area a largely rural county and beautiful. There is no justification for the complexity and excess of the current policy. It is insulting to think that the county legislates beauty by dictating these requirements, forcing the use of excessive materials. Under Land Use Matters, it goes on to highlights that we need to eliminate the master development process. It says, "The core problem is that this process drags on many months while we debate the number of trees to be planted and the number of cars that line up, that are added to the line at the light during rush hour." It says Frederick County is a gem of a business location and has the opportunity to attract and retain a lot of business. There is competition, and we need to find ways to be even more attractive to win business and expansion. One solution is to copy the competition, to throw money and freebies at these processes. We just have to throw more. Unfortunately, this approach seems, sends the wrong signal. It sends the signal that we are, we are not worthy of your business, we just need to bribe you more. I think, and the report goes on, to say a less costly and more effective solution such as time is money, to make our fast-track processes supersonic, to add value, not cost. I was really, I loved this committee report. They did an outstanding job, and as you all know, it went on and on and on, and they provided many, many recommendations. And I would just remind you that last year, the county budget was amended to increase our property taxes. This was to generate $3 million to pay for across-the-board government employee salary increases. No budget cuts were made to ease the taxpayer burden. And now, just in the last few months, we have some expenditures being considered and are already committed. Outside agency contributions over $2 million. Public safety overtime, 400K. Sun Guard software implementation, almost 400K. Kraft Foods Global, 325K. Navy Federal Credit Union, a quarter mil. McKesson Medical Surgical, another 150K. You know, this totals up to $3.6 million, 3.6 mil. It would appear that the direction of the county seems to be that of government expansion over regulation and higher taxes. I hope that you would give consideration to the comments provided by citizens and their committees. Thank you very much for allowing me to address the board.
Anyone else, Mr. Riley?
No, sir.
Any Board of Supervisors comments? All right, we'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, June 12th.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as written.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the regular meeting, June 12th, 2013, are approved. Next, under county officials, is the appointment of the Opeckin magistrate district seat supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Bob Wells to fill the Opeckin seat.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Riley, will you contact Mr. Wells?
Yes, sir.
Next is our couple presentations. Vice Chairman DeHaven, would you join?
If past Supervisor Bill Ewing would please come up. This is a resolution, whereas Bill M. Ewing served the citizens of Frederick County, Virginia, for over nine years as the Opeckin district supervisor, representative to the Board of Supervisors, and whereas Supervisor Ewing served as vice chairman in 2006 and 2009 through May of 2013, and whereas during his tenure, he held seats on numerous committees, including that of chairman of the Finance Committee from 2005 to 2013, and a member of the Public Safety Committee, 2004, Regional Water Resources Advisory Committee, 2004, Code and Ordinance Committee, 2004, 2007, and 2012 and 13, Transportation Committee, 2005, Human Resources Committee, 2008 to 2013, Technology Committee, 2012 to 2013, Northwest Regional Jail Authority, 2004 to 2013, Stevens City Joint Land Use Committee, 2008, Consolidation Committee, Steering Committee, 2009, Downtown Development Board, 2005 to 2008, Hanley Regional Library Board, 2006 to 2013, and Joint Finance Committee, 2005 to 2013. And whereas Supervisor Ewing was a tireless worker for not only the constituents in his district, but all the citizens of Frederick County, and whereas this board will always consider Supervisor Ewing a colleague and friend, now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincere thanks to Supervisor Bill M. Ewing and wishes him all the best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of Frederick County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the accomplishment of this citizen legislature. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Adopted this 12th day of June 2012. This is a gift from the employees of Frederick County. You may take the top off. Yes, I'm holding you. I've always held you up.
I'm just gonna say, it's been a pleasure working with the board and great honor serving the citizens of Opeckin District. Thanks, everyone.
Now we have another presentation. This is July 2013 Employee of the Month. Would Linda L. Huff come forward, please?
The Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Linda L. Huff for consideration as Employee of the Month for July 2013. Linda serves the Northwestern Regional Adult Detention Center and is being awarded for her loyalty and commitment to her position as food services supervisor. During the month of February, Linda was able to fill in for the food services manager in her absence. Linda handled daily issues, including request forms, diets, menu changes, orders, weekly billing, meal counts, and any other requirements. Linda learned and handled these responsibilities with ease, all while showing professionalism and ability to work as a team. She was also able to handle issues between multiple facilities within the building without utilizing overtime due to her willingness to adjust her personal schedule when needed and work around her coworkers. Due to Linda's loyalty to the department and the facility, the department was able to continue to operate efficiently. Linda is to be commended for her initiative and dedication. Now entertain a motion to approve Linda L. Huff as Employee of the Month for July 2013.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion made by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Linda L. Huff is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for July 2013. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to you for your outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes you continued success in future endeavors. Thank you very much. Extension Leadership Council, Shawnee. Do we have anybody?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Parks and Rec, Stonewall?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Conservation, Easyman Authority. I believe these two are ready.
Mr. Chairman, I have spoken, both gentleman, Mr. Lodge and Mr. Marker are willing to serve again, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Todd B. Lodge and John R. Marker. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Todd B. Lodge and John R. Marker are reappointed to the Conservation, Easyman Authority. Frederick Winchester Service Authority, Frederick County Representative. Did anyone check with Mr. Cleveland?
Mr. Chairman, I did, and Dr. Cleveland is willing to serve again, and I would so move.
Good. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Dr. Ned M. Cleveland is reappointed to the Frederick Winchester Service Authority. I believe that completes the committee appointments. Next is the Craft Resolution and Performance Agreement. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a resolution before you requesting the appropriation of $325,000 in installments as stated in the executed performance agreement to the Industrial Development Authority of Frederick County, Virginia, from the Frederick County's fund balance to assist in expanding the operation of Kraft Foods Global Incorporated in Frederick County. As the board is aware, Kraft is making an investment of $25 million in machinery and equipment, adding 25 new jobs. The two installments will be the first of $150,000, provided they meet certain performance criteria, and then the second of $175,000 under the same conditions. Average salary is $38,500 a year, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Riley.
Mr. Riley? I believe, I don't see in our packet tonight, but didn't we have an estimated offset for our investment of what our planned, what this investment from the county was going to reap in benefits?
There was an issue raised with reference to the assessment that the county assessed on the property. That refund has not been submitted yet to the company or been requested, and we're in the process of reviewing that, and we'll have to reevaluate that in August.
Was that your question? I thought his question might have been, what was our net return on this investment?
I thought that when we did the, when the EDC did their valuation, $325,000 that we were investing was going to bring us a return on our investment of a payback period.
Excuse me. We recover that in two years with, with the additional revenue generated by the company and the equipment. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, I misunderstood you.
Took me down a different path. That's fine.
That's all right.
On the other issue, have all outstanding questions been cleared and adjudicated?
We are working through that process now due to the exoneration requested by the company, but has not yet been authorized.
And no reason to believe performance standards won't be met?
I do not believe so. I've had the assurances of the Economic Development Director that he is monitoring that and is due for review next month.
Okay. Other questions? All right, what is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'd move for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is the McKesson Resolution and Performance Agreement. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, again, another resolution requesting that the board appropriate $150,000 to the Industrial Development Authority of Frederick County from the Governor's Opportunity Fund to assist in locating and the distributing operation of McKesson Medical Surgical. It should be known that the company is investing $36,900,000 in improvements, 13.3 million in equipment, 23.6 million in buildings, and creating 205 new jobs. And again, this is appropriating money to be received from the Governor's Opportunity Fund. This is not a match.
Questions for Mr. Riley? All right, pleasure, the board?
Chairman, I'd move to approve the resolution.
A motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is correspondence from the town of Middletown in reference to the boundary line, or boundary adjustment zoning inspections. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe you have before you the response from the town of Middletown with reference to trying to resolve some issues and working with them in the future. It may be appropriate, if you see fit, for you and I to meet with the mayor to determine, basically, what they are looking for and how they want to get there. I'm not quite sure at this point what the situation is with town council.
Mr. Riley's suggestion is that he and I meet with them and come back with a report to you in reference to the letter. Does that meet with everybody's okay?
Mr. Chairman, I was approached by one of the members, and they would like to start the dialogue again, hopefully with a fresher start and off on a better foot than we had prior, so I would encourage that we get to, that you and Mr. Riley do that.
If I have a consensus, no objections, and that's what we'll do. Next is the Commissioner of Revenue refund request. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated June 27, 2013, to authorize the treasurer to refund Penske Truck Leasing Company the amount of $6,673.40 for that portion of a refund for proration or exoneration of vehicles and registration fees in the normal course of business for 2013. This adjustment was not posted until May 2013 after information was received by the leasing company for the first time. And pursuant to Section 58.1, 3981A of the Code of Virginia, the county attorney hereby notes his consent for the proposed action, and we request the Board of Supervisors respectfully approve it.
Questions for Mr. Riley? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The next one is to approve a refund and supplemental appropriation of $13,471.80 to Penske Truck Leasing Company for proration or exoneration of vehicles and registration fees in the normal course of business for calendar year 2013. This adjustment was not posted until May 2013 after information was received from the leasing company for the first time. Total refund is $13,471.80. Documentation for this refund has been retained by the Commissioner of Revenue's office and contains secure data. It is respectfully requested that the board approve same.
Questions for Mr. Riley? If not, pleasure, the board? Yes, come forward. Commissioner of Revenue would like to address us.
The paperwork on this is a bit confusing. There are two $6,000 amounts, the total, the 13, not separate and additional. 13 would be the entire, the $13,000 amount is the entire amount. I originally thought I had to do it as two fiscal years because of needing the appropriation to pay out the refund. So you don't need to approve 19,000 total. It's two six or the 113.
Mr. Riley, did you?
Can you help Mr. Riley on that, please?
In a different way. I thought I heard you correctly, but maybe...
I thought he said six first and then 13.
That's how I heard you.
And it's, I just wanted you to understand that it isn't both.
We have it corrected.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody else, I can't say what we said or not said, but I took it to mean two 6,000 plus.
Correct.
All right, so I believe I was in the middle of, did I have a motion and a second? Okay, so we're on the second, 6,673.40, I believe. Did we do the, did you do 12 first and then 13, Mr. Riley?
I did.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Hearing on Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the refund is approved. Our next item is a referral of the unsolicited proposal under Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 to the Public Works Committee for evaluation and negotiation of a comprehensive agreement. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board may be aware, the board did not receive any additional unsolicited or solicited proposals on June 25, 2013. The only proposal that we have received was the unsolicited proposal received earlier this, in June, or May, excuse me, and it's respectfully requested, since we only have one proposal, that we go ahead and forward same to the Public Works Committee to evaluate same and begin the process to establish the comprehensive negotiated agreement.
All right, you have a resolution that refers it to Public Works. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the resolution.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion.
Just a comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we have expertise and experience at that committee level that we don't have any place else in the county. I think it's an excellent place to start.
I would agree. Other discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution is approved. Mr. Riley, did you need a voice on that?
Sir?
Did you need a person supervisor on that?
No, sir. That's fine.
All right, next is the Frederick County Business Climate Assessment Citizen Committee Report. Mr. Riley, who most of y'all know chaired that, made up of local businessmen who worked in strategic committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On behalf of the Frederick County Business Friendly Committee, I am pleased to present the committee's final report. This is the culmination of about six months' worth of work at the subcommittee level. I want to thank all of the committee members and staff for their time and energy and for the serious and thoughtful approach that they brought to this initiative. We believe this was the ultimate demonstration in government transparency. As Frederick County invited members of the business community to review and critique our organization and processes, we hope the committee members found it to be a rewarding and educational experience. I will now present a summary of recommendations developed by the various subcommittees. In the current economic climate, it is vitally important that local government create a catalyst for businesses in their community to grow and prosper. With this statement in mind, the Board of Supervisors in October of 2012 formed the Frederick County Business Climate Assessment Citizens Committee, or Business Friendly Committee, to evaluate the current processes and procedures being used by local government. This effort was not intended to be a criticism of what local government is currently doing, but a search for and understanding of the ways that Frederick County government can be more responsive and better meet the needs of new and existing businesses in today's world. Approximately 50 representatives from the business community participated in this endeavor. The participants were divided into four subcommittees which addressed the following topics: land use and development, taxes, assessments, fees and services, business, large and small, attraction and retention, local procurement of services. The kickoff meeting for this initiative was held on December 11, 2012. At this meeting, participants were introduced to their respective staff contacts and given a brief overview of Frederick County government. Following the kickoff meeting, the subcommittees met numerous times between January and May of 2013 and developed a list of recommendations. Staff has received a list of 65 recommendations from the subcommittees which are included in this report. Many of the recommendations did not focus on Frederick County operations, but rather the promotion of Frederick County as a business destination. Examples included hiring a PR firm to promote Frederick County, hiring an advertising agency to promote Frederick County interest in various media, and studying the need to create a public information officer position. One of the more cost-effective approaches to promoting Frederick County was the recommendation to install signage along Interstate 81 and major routes entering Frederick County stating Frederick County is open for business. This initiative would show Frederick County as a positive business partner and could help provide the county with a marketing advantage. Should the board wish to evaluate this recommendation, staff would recommend this item be referred to the Transportation Committee for further consideration. The following are three recommendations which overlapped two to three of the subcommittees. The first, completion of Route 37. It was recommended that efforts be made to complete Route 37. The completion of Route 37 would encourage business expansion opportunities along Routes 50, East and West, 522, North and South, Route 11, North and South, and Route 7. It was further suggested a committee be established to solely focus on the completion of Route 37 East. It should also be noted that the county was recognized for its savvy in using matching funds to facilitate the completion... funds to facilitate the completion of the project. Economic Development Authority. In October 24, 1967, Frederick County created the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Frederick, Virginia. The powers and authorities of an industrial development authority and an economic development authority are the same. The change from an IDA to an EDA would provide the Board with an opportunity to reestablish the economic development vision for the county and provide the flexibility to pursue a variety of business attraction and retention options and strategies for completing a diversified economic development environment. Should the Board wish to pursue the recommendation, consideration should be given to the role of the EDA and its relationship to the Economic Development Commission. Customer Service Training. It was recommended that county employees working the front line, example, phones, information desks, et cetera, should attend a professionally outsourced customer service seminar focusing on diffusing hostility in a customer and resolving problems for the customer. The committee members recognize that dealing with the public can be a difficult task, and not everyone might have the ability or tools necessary to diffuse a hostile customer or deal with an irrational complainant. Should the Board wish to pursue this recommendation, staff will work with the HR department to secure outside customer service training for the frontline county staff. The next portion of this report will look at two or three recommendations from each subcommittee: taxes, fees, and assessments. Web Service Advertisement. Frederick County has made great strides in offering web-based service for billing and payment of fees and taxes, which save the county time and money. The committees recommend an organized and focused public awareness, advertisement, incentive, and education program to promote the use of web-based services within Frederick County. One suggestion included advertising services via inserts in current tax bills which provide step-by-step instructions regarding the use of online services. Cross-Department System Capability and Utilization. There is a need for better cross-department information sharing. The committee recommends the county look at ways to utilize existing technology in a way that allows any department to access information about a customer's open activities. This would allow customers to make payments in one location rather than visiting two or three different departments to make the same payments. The cross-department system capability could lead to the elimination of some duplicated work performed by various departments. Permit and Development Fee Comparison Study. The committee recommends a cost analysis comparison of business permits, fees, and other development review fees in Frederick County to surrounding localities to be completed every five years. The study results should be provided to the EDC for comments. The final study should be provided to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. Local Procurement Subcommittee. Implementation of Lean Effort. The committee recommends implementation of a lean effort or process improvements, analysis for doing business with the county and its related parties focusing on how local merchants conduct business with and sell to Frederick County. Improved Communication and Education of Local Vendors. The committee recommends continuing process improvements for communicating with and educating current and potential local vendors. This could be accomplished by providing information packets to vendors at the time of issuance or renewal of their business license. Web links with other county offices and/or completion of website improvement efforts. Streamline and Uniform Processes of Doing Business with the County. The committee recommends development of uniform processes for doing business with the county and its related parties to include the Frederick County's public schools. Currently, procurement processes are different for many parts of the county. The streamlining and uniformity of these processes where applicable would facilitate the participation of local vendors in the procurement process. Land Use and Development Subcommittee. First item is the elimination of the master development process. The committee recommends elimination of the master development process because this process is incorporated in other existing ordinances and has resulted in duplicative process. Should the Board wish to explore this recommendation further, a reevaluation of the current master development plan process would be appropriate. Reduction in Proffer Requirements. The committee recommends a reduction in proffer requirements for future rezoning applications as well as amendments to existing proffers to create viable projects that will deliver needed transportation improvements and other benefits. Upon the committee's examination of the mode, it was determined that there are numerous capital items contemplated and incorporated into the model, but those projects are not being built in the current year. Further, the proffer model does not fully account for business, personal property tax, and other revenue that is significant, a significant benefit to Frederick County in addition to property taxes. Should the Board wish to explore this recommendation further, a reevaluation of the current development impact model taking into account current economic conditions would be appropriate. Simplify the Landscape Ordinance. The committee recommends a complete review and reevaluation of the Frederick County buffers and landscaping ordinance to provide a well-defined purpose to allow for flexibility in project site landscaping, tree preservation, and effective development buffers. Additional recommendations concerning this ordinance can be found in the memorandum from Scott W. Marsh dated May 2, 2013, which is included in the appendices of this report. Business Attraction and Retention Subcommittee. Development of an available workforce with needed skill sets. The committee identified an available workforce with needed skill sets as a primary catalyst for retaining businesses. The committee recommends working with the local junior high, high school, and college-level school systems to help students identify potential skill sets needed in the community. One method of achieving this goal would be through the use of cluster groups to help local businesses work together with Lord Fairfax Community College and Shenandoah University to identify the classes and degrees needed for local jobs and address the skill sets that are generally associated with technical jobs. Representatives from the business community could also visit junior high and high schools to talk about careers. This could be the catalyst for student visits to local businesses or possible summer employment opportunities. Finally, the promotion of a returning professional scholarship could be used to raise awareness to local students of local professional opportunities. Development and Maintenance of a Catalog of Available Property for Potential Development. The committee noted the lack of identified land for development and expansion as a weakness in the area of business attraction. The committee recommends the development and maintenance of a system to catalog property available for development. This format of this proposed system was unclear, as was the department that could serve as the responsible repository for this information. Should the Board wish to pursue this recommendation, it would be appropriate for the department charged with maintaining this information to make this information available to other departments such as planning and the Economic Development Commission. Creation of a Direct Marketing Brochure to Buy Fresh, Buy Local. The committee identified the promotion of agribusiness as a priority. It was noted the area was moving away from apple processing to direct marketing. The committee recommends the development of a comprehensive direct marketing brochure that addresses all fresh buy local products in Frederick County. Conclusion. In addition to those recommendations previously noted, other recommendations focused on expansion of educational opportunities such as a Frederick County campus for Shenandoah University or the expansion of Shenandoah University programs to include a law school. The entire list of recommendations is attached for your review. While we did not elaborate on all of the recommendations, the Board is encouraged to carefully review the entire list and advise staff if there are other recommendations that they feel merit additional consideration and study. After reviewing the various subcommittee reports and speaking with the chairman of the subcommittees, we are pleased to report that Frederick County is a business-friendly locality. Many of the participants were pleased to find the county in a good operating position. Our tax structure was seen as neither a benefit nor a deterrent for business. The county received praise for soliciting this feedback. It was also noted by the subcommittee chairman that most localities would be too timid to undertake such a process as this. Other committee members hoped this was the beginning of an effort and that the process would continue. On behalf of Frederick County, I want to thank all of the committee members and staff for their participation in this initiative, and we look forward to evaluating all of the recommendations and working together to ensure that Frederick County remains open for business. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Rowley? I'm sure I speak on behalf of the Board that we're all thankful to the participants who gave the time and staff. I'm not sure if Mr. Rowley and I really closed in on the next topic or not about where we go from here or if he has some ideas.
We are-
I only have one.
We are assuming that the overlapping recommendations that were a common thing among the four committees and the high priorities of each committee, we will move forward on an implementation phase now unless the Board sees that in another way. We're assuming we have our marching orders if the Board is comfortable in receiving the report.
When you put them in capsule form and went over them, did you see them lending themselves to that? Because I was sitting here wondering if you and I need to divvy them up and divide them up amongst committees or you think it's not necessary?
Well, I'm thinking the EDA needs, that process needs to start to create that because it is a different structure than what we currently enjoy, and that is a combination of the IDA and the EDC and how that's going to function.
It's a pretty big mouthful to just say, start implementing, and if there's an approval by us that's needed other than acceptance of the report, it'll have a lot of work invested in it by the time we get it again. Do they lend themselves to break up an assignment to committees?
They can. The signage issue-
They might have to create a new one, right?
Right. The signage issue, we're recommending go to Transportation Committee.
Is that viable for you and I to divide them up?
Yes.
And if there's some that don't fit any committee, then for a short term, we'll have a new committee. And as needed, report out a committee blessing, and at least get a, other than just to accept the report or approve the report, get a blessing by the Board one way or the other.
Right. We could use in advisory capacity the four chairs of the committees to work with us as we assign these and work through it. There are a number of ways we can do it, but if you would like to sit down with me and we can come up with-
You obviously are closer to it than I am, so I'm looking for a way to handle the report. Any of you have ideas?
Mr. Chairman? Reading through this whole thing, you know, there's a lot of information here. There's some things that appeared well-done, and there's things that I question because there's some things here to me that look like it creates government to grow a little bit, which means more funding and higher taxes, and I think there's some of these things need to be looked at. I don't mind referring it to a committee, but I don't think this means approval of any of this, just evaluation of the process. One suggestion I thought of was-
Come back with a recommendation to implement or not.
Well, I was wondering if there were sections of this we might think about and come up with priorities of which ones to be looked at rather than all at one shot. Now, if staff can do all that, I guess that's okay.
I think we're recommending about six or seven recommendations that can move forward. There's obviously 65 in the report that, those were the most obvious and discussed in more than one committee as areas that Frederick County should pursue, but I'd be more than happy to sit down with the chairman and we can come up with a recommended course of implementation at the next board meeting. I would like you to accept the report, though. We put a lot of work on it.
Just what does accepting-
Talk about it first, and then we'll go into the acceptance. Go ahead.
Just what does accepting the report mean? Clearly, all of the recommendations have merit, but as to echo what I believe Supervisor Fisher indicated, not necessarily sure I'm prepared to approve all of these recommendations at this point.
Well, I would hope that the acceptance of the report means that the Board generally concurs with the direction that the committee is going with reference to the initiatives that they have put forward. To do anything less than that, I don't think is going to be productive.
Yep. One other thing I'd like to add is perhaps, depending on what steps we decide on here, that perhaps this become a regular item on the Board's agenda to review the status of our dealings or our progress with this report.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I think that you and Mr. Rowley sitting down, Mr. Rowley being sort of the head over this project, certainly has talked to this committee chairman and has a good feel for what the priorities should be, and I think we accept this report and move forward. There's no sense in asking for information if we're not gonna take any information, try to make something, work with it. So I would bless you and Mr. Rowley sitting down and kind of doling that out with the priorities to the committees, and if you have to develop a committee, that's fine, but certainly move forward with this.
I think it would give us the necessary board engagement that we want ongoing. I do think that, because it just is an idea I just had, that there might be things here that don't fit anywhere, and I would ask that you allow Mr. Rowley and I to tap two or three of you to be on that committee to deal with it, to see that it comes back. I mean, sometimes there's money, sometimes there's time, sometimes there's effort, and it seems like that's just too much to ask staff to forge ahead with and then somebody cough it to last minute.
Right.
But tell me what's workable, John.
I think sitting down with you and determining how you want to move forward with this report would be fine. I would like you to accept it, though, and then we can move forward on working on the different parts of it because these men and women came up with some extraordinarily great ideas, and it's important that we as staff recognize that by opening up the shop, we were able to get new and better ideas and a better way to approach things than maybe we were doing.
65 total, right?
Right.
How many showed up in the executive summary? You remember?
Approximately 10, I think.
Example only, I like the road signs. That's a money issue. Probably getting people besides us to bless it like a V dot, I don't know. Trying to, you're more intimately remembering the 10 items. I'm just wondering what's the best way to bring, ease the comfort of, did we really bless it or just accept it and so that it moves along quickly?
I think what you'll find is when we sit down, there are committees and commissions and boards already established that can receive these and start working on them.
Think it'll move along and the committee won't hurt?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
I think they're anxious to start, to be truthful with you.
Because I'd like for it to reappear again. If it's only 10 things on this first round, I almost like a vote right here, but you couldn't do that tonight.
No, you need to, you need to accept it, you need to read it, discuss it, and work through it there, but I think every board member is sincere enough that they don't want it to remain idle. They want to move with it and move as quickly as possible. And a good example on the signs is, is that the IDA has an account that's been established through 1/10th of 1% of the unpaid balance on principal loans that can pay for the signs. I mean, there are a number of issues that don't involve taxpayer money, and it's unfortunate that, you know, sometimes that takes the lead in what this group did because this group took it from a totally different angle.
Well, take like the example of, what was it you were gonna put in the tax bill?
A how-to brochure on to interact.
Fighting with this. How do we, we accept the report, that's pretty low level, needs an approval here, and yet- kind of like it to move along, so maybe one size doesn't fit all, I don't know, but would you all want to vote on a how-to that went out in the tax bill before it went out? I mean-
I'm just suspecting, Mr. Chairman, that the Treasurer's Office would have better input and insight into what's really involved in that process.
You're going to need to see what things look like before they go out, I mean-
I'm really looking to charter a course. If we want to see it, it's okay with me, even if they're the ones that prepare it, but if we can make one size fit all, I think it's best. I just don't know if we can. You think it will?
I think that as we get into this and we look at it, there are appropriate committees that most of these things can be referred to, to refine them before you take a final action. But we have to start by accepting it so we can start working on it.
Everybody going to be okay?
You need a motion to accept it?
Motion to accept.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor Collins. Discussion.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. Did we, are we moving to accept the report with gratitude, which certainly I know we are, for all the hard work and time invested, but then are we expecting the different committees that you all decide on to begin the work to come back with a better implementation strategy?
I think most often, I think most often, that's what we shoot for, but if it's a Treasurer's Office repaired, I don't know that there's a committee to go to, but you'll see it again.
Well, but we have someone to render input in the strategy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, good.
That work?
Yes, sir.
So you'll see them again, and you're wanting to see them sooner than later, and you're wanting to know how the recommendation got implemented. Then we'll act accordingly, depending on what comes to us.
Very good.
Sound good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What will we do? Send a letter of thank you to these folks, let this suffice, or I'd be glad to sign something if, on behalf of the board, if-
I'd be more than happy to compose a letter to the chairs and the committee members-
Okay.
-for your signature.
And can we memorialize the group as it worked this time?
Yes.
Sometimes it's good for later on, when people are around to look back and see who is there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Riley? Thank you for your time as well.
Thank you.
We didn't, oh, all the, Mr. Tibbs, we didn't, did we not vote? Excuse me. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those, no. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to Code and Ordinance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Code and Ordinance Committee met on July 1st, and under number one of requiring the board action, the Code and Ordinance Committee reviewed a request to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155 Taxation, Article II, which would be amended to defer the payment of rollback taxes until the property's use changes rather than at the time the zoning classification changes. The board worked and the staff worked with Delegate Minshew in the 2013 legislative session to enable this. The motion was unanimously approved, and I so moved that this board approve the changes that were made to the Chapter 155 of the Taxation Code.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
This will be sent to public hearing?
To public hearing.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, to send to public hearing.
No, don't you get my otherwise? Thank you, Mr. Riley. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those, no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, also, the committee took up one minor revision within Chapter 158 of the Vehicles and Traffic Section, 158-4D, where it was amended from and to or to clarify some legal language issues that lawyers like myself could take advantage of. So with that, with that revision, it makes it far more clear and enforceable.
Question, does this keep you from taking advantage of the county now?
Yes.
Okay. Motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor De Haven. Our discussion.
Yes, Supervisor Collins, didn't we have a, I can't find the item right now in my copy, but didn't we discuss that state, the word state would also appear before inspection? And I believe in the copy that I received, that was not in there.
I do remember a conversation about having state inspection. I'm not sure that anybody ever made that motion and make the change to current state inspection sticker. I'm not sure if it matters, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, when we had the Code and Ordinance Committee meeting, I think I suggested some draft language, and frankly can't remember whether I, when I uttered those words, included the word state or not, but it probably doesn't hurt to have the word state.
Yeah, I thought that was a specific point that was made, that we wanted to make that distinction.
Would you want to back up, and your motion include that change, and your second include that change?
I will do, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that it says, "Current state license," oops, "or a current state inspection sticker."
And you concur with the second?
Yes, sir.
Second, correct. Other discussion? This is to go to public hearing. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those, no. Motion carries. Next, is that it?
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next is the Transportation Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Transportation Committee met on June 24th at 8:30 a.m. in the First War Conference Room. We had one request for action from VDOT, and as they moved forward on the reconstruction of the Route 623 Bridge, they were seeking our feedback on maintenance of traffic issues, specifically, they wish to know if the county's preference would be to keep the bridge open during construction or detour traffic. VDOT's proposing to fully close the bridge, which will lead to significant detours. They're not excessive, but they're real, but it will also cause the project to be completed in approximately a year, sooner than it normally would. That's in one construction cycle, which is one construction season, but basically a year, as opposed to two, and at a cost savings of about a million dollars. The cost benefit to the non-phase construction is about a half a million. The cost reduction due to less width being required in order to maintain traffic is about a half a million. The detour is 5.26 miles, so that's what we're asking folks to bear for a year, or a construction cycle, most of a year. It was 1.7 miles eastbound, going up to 3.5 miles westbound, that's towards Marlborough, and coming towards Winchester, it's 9.5 miles eastbound, and no difference, and 13 miles westbound. So the consensus of the committee was that we should accomplish the construction cycle in one construction cycle at the cost savings of approximately a million dollars, and totally close the bridge and implement the detours for the length of construction, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to close the bridge, have the detour, and lessen the construction costs.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor Fisher. A question by me, does VDOT say, "This is our recommendation, do you agree or will you object," or do they say, "It's up to you, whichever way you want it?"
The basic tone was that it was our decision. They did have the recommendation which we've reviewed.
Can we get the extra money for something else?
I don't think that we get discretion on that, sir. But we did not specifically ask that question, it's a good question. They have quite a long list for their maintenance money.
Well, as long as it's Frederick County, I mean-
No, no, it will be Frederick County. It does not go somewhere else.
Any other questions? Personally, I struggle with these type issues. Supervisor Lofton.
I'm assuming we took into consideration that this detour also affects emergency response vehicles in the Tim fact?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, it also is affecting about 367 vehicles a day, is the current volume, which I don't think I reported out. We did have that consideration.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I am prepared to accept somebody else's recommendation and feel pretty inadequate to be sure what the right answer is. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those, no. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, sir.
All right, next is a public hearing on a 12-month outdoor festival permit request of Blue Fox Billiards Bar and Grill. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a 12-month outdoor festival permit of Blue Fox Billiards Bar and Grill, and this is pursuant to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 86 Festivals, which requires a permit, application, and issuance or denial. Fee in Paragraph 9 is for, Paragraph D is for 12 months. All events to be held on the grounds of Blue Fox Billiards Bar and Grill, 1160 Millwood Pike, Winchester, Virginia, property owned by 1160 Millwood Pike LLC. And I believe Mr. Collins advised me that the applicant has been detained in traffic in Delaware, so I don't believe there's anyone here with reference to that application to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Mr. Riley?
Chairman, I have one, and maybe they can straighten this out. Under the dates, start time, end time, maximum number of tickets offered for sale per day is 1,500, but the estimated number of attendees per day is 1,600. Maybe we can find out why that discrepancy?
Yes, sir, we'll find out.
You could conduct the public hearing, delay your vote, you could conduct the public hearing, vote, or you could delay the public hearing in the case where the applicant's not here, if you have any concerns.
Mr. Chairman, the only question, I didn't get by there to talk to the owner or the manager, but the only issue that I wanted a little clarification on is when they use the adjacent parking lot, is how the pedestrian traffic will access the facility, because I don't want them pushing those people out into the shoulder of Route 50. That's the only concern that I would have. They have had events there before, and there have not been any issues that I'm aware of, Mr. Riley or staff, and that they seem to have managed those first events okay.
Yes, sir. But we would share that concern with the applicant, that all parking is as provided on-site and not on the right-of-way?
Well, I think they will use some adjacent parking, and as long as they conduct that properly, I personally, Mr. Chairman, have no problem with moving forward with this this evening.
Well, I would suggest we go ahead with the public hearing, and then we'll decide after the public hearing, unless somebody objects. It was advertised. So we will now conduct a public hearing to consider 12-month outdoor festival permit request for Blue Fox Billiards Bar and Grill pursuant to Frederick County Code, Chapter 89 Festivals, Section 86-3, permit required, application, issuance or denial, fee, Paragraph D, 12-month permits. All events to be held on the grounds of the Blue Fox Billiards Bar and Grill, 1160 Millwood Pike, Winchester, Virginia, property owned by 1160 Millwood Pike LLC. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this 12-month outdoor festival permit? So would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please? Seeing no, we'll close the public hearing. Now we can decide what we want to do.
Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for a motion, I would propose a motion to approve the 12-month outdoor festival permit request of Blue Fox Billiards Bar and Grill with the concern I expressed earlier being addressed by staff.
That concern addressed by staff in a reconciliation of Supervisors Lofton's discrepancy in numbers?
Yes.
Is there a second? We have a second. Mr. Riley, does that work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hearing done, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. The 12-month outdoor festival permit is approved. Next is a public hearing on an ordinance amendment, Frederick County Code 165, zoning, Article II, supplementary use regulations, parking buffers, and regulations for specific uses. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As noted, this is a public hearing to consider the revision of Part 202 of the zoning ordinance, specifically as it deals with entrance spacing standards, in order to deal with some disconnect between our standards and those of VDOT, as well as clarify some issues with residential entrances. This item was discussed at the February 2013 meeting of the DRC. The Planning Commission discussed it on March 20th, 2013. They had some concerns relative to not using speeds any longer. Once again, we made the modifications that make it more in line with what VDOT is doing, which is part of why some of the speeds went away, it's more facility-based. The board considered it on May 8th of 2013. Some issues that came up on that date had to do with how the distance was measured, tangent versus centerline. That language has been modified to specifically stay with tangent, which is consistent with what VDOT uses for their membership, for their measurement. Additionally, an item that came up at that meeting was, had to do with interparcial access. However, though some paragraphs that deal with interparcial access have minor language revisions to basically the distinction of driveway versus entrance, the addition of both words as opposed to just using one, that was not a new part of this ordinance. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on June 19th without additional comment and has recommended approval, and we have it now before you this evening. I can take any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Bishop? Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Bishop, are there any existing properties that don't have, let's say, access from a minor collector or that would be affected by this that would not meet these requirements? In other words, they are lots that currently exist, they're going to not fall into the classification here of these distances, and there's no other access. Are we going to run into that someplace? Or is that this comment down here where the zoning administrator may allow other means, is that the catch-all to cover that?
That's the catch-all to cover that. We cannot, under state code, absolutely landlock a parcel and deny access. VDOT has similar provisions under their entrance spacing where they cannot deny access, though if the parcel had access to, say, a major collector on one side and a minor collector on another one, they would be required to use the minor collector.
And they wouldn't get burdened with, you don't believe what this thing, it's a traffic access plan, sounds like?
Yes, state code doesn't allow us to lock them in.
Okay.
It's a taking.
Other question, Supervisor Lofton?
I have a concern under, let's see, number seven, shared access, 7-4.
You're with me.
When we're talking about shared access being required, it almost seems like that you could be taking someone's property to benefit someone else's property. Am I reading that correctly?
I would not interpret it that way. This is not a new portion of this ordinance, this is part of the existing ordinance. That specific bullet has not been modified.
No, but in looking at that, I'm like, the zoning administrator can require de dedication for joint use and maintenance, so if I'm developing a piece of property that needs access, will get access, but the property next to me cannot, then I have to provide that access with my property.
You do not have to build the actual stubout, you do have to allow them to come across to get out to your entrance, yes.
Right, but it says I can't use parking lot, driveway areas, loading areas, so I'm basically giving up a portion of my property for the next-door neighbor. Am I reading that correctly? Am I reading that correctly?
You could look at it that way, yes.
Okay. A second concern I have is, and I raised this last time, is whenever VDOT changes their standards, we wind up changing our code. Would it be better to just take all the language out that VDOT requires and just say, you have to go to VDOT, and then only deal in our code with what we specifically want to address, separate from what VDOT addresses? That way, it's not dated. When they go to get a driveway permit, they go to VDOT, they deal with the current VDOT standards, and we're not coming back, readdressing our code every time VDOT decides they want to do something differently.
This is largely a carryover. I'd say we do do that in a lot of cases, because obviously, VDOT requirements stack up this high, and we only have a small portion of them in our ordinance. However, entrance spacing is one that has, for lack of a better way to put it, flexed quite a bit over the last several years. For a long time, our standards were significantly stiffer than VDOT's, where their basic standard was 50-foot separation, which was frankly woefully inadequate for many of our roadways and their traffic loads. So we had a higher standard. Then VDOT, a couple of years back now, adopted new access management standards, and they actually leapfrogged us and got significantly stiffer. But then there's fairly significant public outcry, those came back a little bit. So we're trying to frankly tread the middle a little bit, where we felt like they've gone back a little too far. We've kept ours fairly standard, but in most cases, we follow them pretty closely. But these are at about the minimum that we want them to be. And also, the section that deals with residential, VDOT doesn't deal with very well at all, and it has created some issues for us in Frederick County, which is why that's in there.
So I'm hearing you say that our code can supersede VDOT standards?
Only if it's more restrictive.
Other questions? Next, sir. Thank you. Now conduct a public hearing on an ordinance amendment, Frederick County Code 165, zoning Article 2 supplementary use regulations, parking buffers, and regulations for specific uses. Part 202, off-street parking, loading and access, 165-203, motor vehicle access, revise and update motor vehicle access requirements, specifically entrance spacing requirements. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure, the board?
Chairman, I'd move for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing done. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman reluctantly aye. You really don't have to put that in there. It was an aye.[1028.11][1028.11](Laughter). Put it in there.
Put an asterisk.
Next is a public hearing on an ordinance amendment, Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning Article 4, agricultural and residential districts, Part 401, R.A., rural districts, et cetera. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. As you may recall, we've talked about this ordinance amendment for the last couple of months. In the rural preservation subdivisions, which are in the rural areas of the county, we've had it on the books for about 20 years, and it says, once you establish that preservation tract, which results from your subdivision, you cannot further divide that parcel. You cannot do boundary line adjustments, you cannot do any land division associated with it. What we have found is there have been situations where people actually want to increase the size of that parcel. We refer to it historically as the 40% set-aside. In recent years, it's become a 60% set-aside, but the same rule always applied. You cannot change the size of that parcel. So with the interest in increasing the size of it, we've got an amendment for your consideration this evening, which would allow for you to add land to this set-aside parcel, the 60% parcel in today's world. You could balance it, you could take a little bit of land out of it, but you can't go below its 40% or 60% minimum lot size. And if you take any land out of it, that land cannot leave the original subdivision. So it's a little confusing, but what it says is you can increase the size of this parcel with any land, you can take some land out of it, but if you take anything out of it, it has to stay with the same subdivision that we're in. We've taken this through the various committees. The DRRRC provided the recommendation, well, draft, and then recommended it. The Planning Commission board have both discussed it, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 19th and have forwarded their recommendation for this change. We are aware of one subdivision that would utilize this upon its approval, and they're the ones that initiated the request four months ago.
Questions to staff? Supervisor DeHaven?
Mr. Chairman, if you would, I've read it multiple times. I thought I was crystal clear, and then you just confused me, sir.[1166.83][1166.83](Laughter). You cannot reduce the size of the original preservation.
Correct.
You can increase it, but you cannot reduce it.
Correct.
Under any circumstances.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Next, sir.
Thank you.
We now conduct a public hearing on an ordinance amendment, Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning Article 4, agricultural and residential districts, Part 401, R.A., rural areas district, 165-401.06, permitted lot sizes revised in order to allow divisions to existing rural preservation tracks that have been recorded. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? If so, please come forward, give your name, magistrate, district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure, the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance amendment as written.
We have a motion to approve by Supervisor Collins. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Supervisor Fisher, discussion? Hearing done. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Board liaison reports, are there any? Citizen comments? This is the portion of the meeting the board sets aside for anyone to address the board on any topic. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would...
If so, would you come to the podium, give your name, magistrate, district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please?
Of course, thank you, Chairman Schickel. I would like to speak to some data that seems to have fallen through the cracks. Maybe it hasn't, maybe you're aware of, maybe you're not. I find myself being more engaged at the local level. I'm Sean Broi. I am a resident of the Opeckin Magisterial District here in Frederick County, and I haven't found myself too often here in the meeting room with you, but through the technology that exists, I have watched you all stars on TV. I'd like for you to keep in mind one thing. As you continue to make decisions that impact lives and somehow don't give necessary due diligence to certain factors that could very easily break the backs of some of the residents of this county. When going through the motions of once again raising taxes, as you did not too long ago, which I watched on TV, and it resembled more of rearranging the deck chairs of a sinking ship of a state, while encouraging the band to play on as we left somebody asleep at the wheel, the data that exists, that has fallen through the cracks as that decision was made, allows for Frederick County to be distinguished on an island of isolation of its own as having the very highest increase in poverty rate. Within a 75-mile radius, you have to go deep into southwest Virginia to find anything And by making that decision to raise taxes once again, and assuming the role more of a democratic-controlled body, a liberal-controlled body, you have most likely broken the backs of even more. That 42% took a hit and went higher. Your neighbors to the north, to the south, to the east, to the west, all show dramatically different numbers. As you continue to make decisions of becoming bigger, of becoming more taxing, realize the weight and due diligence in discovering the facts that are plain and accessible. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Gerald Duquette from Shawnee District. I have a safety concern for my wife, myself, and our small community. We have a rifle range about a mile from our place, off in the paper mill road and back of the cemetery. And this Sunday morning on May 26th, my wife and I were sitting on the porch, and we heard rifle shots, and seconds later, the bullets are whizzing through our trees. So we called the sheriff's department, and they came down, and they say, well, they couldn't find anything. Of course, they stopped shooting then. So an hour later, we're outside, and we hear high-powered rifle shots again, and it went through our trees. It's about 10 to 15 feet up. So we called the sheriff's department again, and they came down, and they say, oh, we can't find anything. We didn't hear it. Of course, they quit shooting then. So about two hours later in the afternoon, we heard the high-powered shots again, and whizzing through our trees, about three, four times, three, four bullets. So we called the sheriff's department again. At this time, we were pretty fatigued about this. We didn't, you know, they're not going to do nothing. So we had Sergeant Swisher. He finally found the place where they were shooting from. It was off the paper mill road and back of the cemetery. So he investigated, and they, excuse me, they saw a couple of fellows there, but all they had was .22s. And they said, no, we never saw anybody, but they saw the shells, the high-powered shells on the ground. And said, you know, the sergeant said, you know, we're not stupid. We see the high-powered shells on the ground. Evidently, they must have hid the gun, the high-powered rifle, in their car or something. So what he told them was, it didn't issue any tickets or anything, he told them to shoot in a different direction, you know? Now, what kind of a gun range is this? All I want is for somebody to check out this gun range. Nobody, the sheriff's department, they got their hands on it now. They don't want nothing to do with it. I've called senators, I've called congressmen, I've called our state senator, our district senator, they don't want nothing to do with it. A lot of times, they won't even answer their phone when I call. Or I leave a message, and they won't call back. All I want is for somebody to look at this land and to see if it's legal. Today, I found some information on it, on the land itself. It's owned by Sheen Valley Land Holding Company out of Strasburg. Now, evidently, these people don't know that there's somebody shooting on their land, but nobody's checking up on it. The sheriff's department doesn't want anything to do with it. I'm just, I just need some help from somebody. I mean, you put yourself in ice shoes. You're sitting on your front porch, you and your wife, and you got bullets flying over your head, and nothing, they just let it go, no investigation on it. All I want is for somebody, you know, to pay attention to this, okay? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Before you leave, would you give your contact information to staff if they don't have it? I can't promise the answer you want, but we'll get back to you. Mr. Riley or Mr. Tibbs, just give them your contact.
I'll give you my name and phone number if you want.
Right over here.
You probably already has it.
Mr. Tibbs, right over here, if you don't mind, sir. Mr. Tibbs, right over here. Raise your hand, Mr. Tibbs. Anyone else who would like to address the board? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Board supervisors' comments? Hearing done?
Chairman, move for adjournment.
A motion by Vice Chairman DeHaven to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Holds a favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses no. Meeting adjourned.